You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Hey, good evening and welcome to the last regular city council meeting for the month of November. It's November 27, 2017. At this time, I'd like to ask my friend Pastor Sean Harris to come forward, please, and lead us with an invocation. If everybody would please rise and remain standing. Following the invocation, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Harris.
Lord God, we come before you tonight, a people in need of you. A city that needs you, a city that needs your love, a city that needs your justice, a city that needs your mercy and protection. And now, Lord God, we pray for these councilmen and women who need wisdom from on high to make decisions that impact an entire city, and in many cases, the county and the state. We pray, Lord, for the transition that will happen in the coming year. We pray that it would be smooth, that it would be reflective of a true democracy, that the city would be better for the transition as the council continues to deliberate as to what is best for the residents and the citizens. We pray for our new police chief. We pray, God, that you would give her guidance, that you would lead her with wisdom, with insight, with discernment. We pray for our first responders, our fire department, and those in the EMS, all our city workers, our city manager, dear God. We pray for our nation. We think about the men and women that are overseas right now. We think about the reality that we're still at war, that there's still an enemy out there that seeks to interrupt our way of life, and that many in this room, in the church that I pastor, and the families that we have are overseas. And we ask, God, that you would protect them, that you would minimize the loss of life, that your mercy would be infinite, and that you would hear and answer our prayers in a particular way. We think about the soldiers that were lost just this week on Fort Bragg. We think about the devastation that suicide is having on our military. And we pray, God, that you would give them the leader's wisdom to know how to intercede, intervene, save lives. We pray all this in Jesus' mighty name, amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Harris, if you'd come back to the microphone, please. Sir, Berean Baptist is a very large church in the community. Tell us something about your mission, what you do, and about your academy, please.
So, our primary mission is to make disciples of the Lord Jesus Christ, and probably our biggest ministry then would be the academy. This year, we have a record enrollment of 530 students, so we're really excited about being able to impact so many lives here in Fayetteville. Young people, who we're trying to teach them how to become productive citizens, members of the community that make a difference, that impact their families and others.
And you just went through a large addition. How many square feet did you add?
Thirty-five thousand square feet.
Just a small, little addition.
Yeah, we're really thankful that it's just about done and really excited about seeing how it's going to impact the community. You can kind of notice it when you drive by now.
It is certainly a beautiful, beautiful facility.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for being here. In District Nine. Thank you, Mr. Arp. Mr. Arp, you have an announcement.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just want to take a second here to recognize the wonderful folks, the Arts Council, and all the major sponsors who put on the Dickens Holiday Festival. If you didn't have a chance to go down this weekend, what a wonderful way to kick off the holiday season. They had a great crowd down there. And, Mr. Mayor, you got to provide greetings along with Commissioner Adams and the wonderful John Malzone in character, does a great job as always. So, I just want to thank the Arts Council, the major sponsors, H&amp;H Homes, the Fayetteville Observer, PWC, and then all the other supporting sponsors who really made that a great effort. And I had quite a bit of family in from out of town, as far away as Atlanta and Florida, and they had never experienced anything like that, and they just thought that was really neat. So, thank you to all those folks who helped make that possible.
That is certainly unique to this community, and it's one of the neatest holiday events anywhere I've ever seen. So, it's, uh, Arts Council did a real good job with that. Councilmember Wright, announcement.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank the community and all those that came out for Pathways to Prosperity Summit. It was a very organized, it was very beneficial, and a lot of people now understand what pathways for prosperity is dealing with poverty in our city. We had over 250 people to show up to that event. I want to thank Councilman Kirk Deviere for heading it up, the hard work that he put in, the research and putting things together, working with me as a team, and all those that are on the committee to make this, uh, this committee successful and to make this summit very successful. Going for more information, you can go to pathwaysprosperity.org, pathwaysforprosperity.org for more information on poverty in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce our member of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council that is our representative tonight. His name is James Thomas, and he is the VP of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. And if I'm not mistaken, James came in, did you come in on your junior year or your sophomore year? Your junior year, okay. So, I'm gonna turn it, um, I'm gonna turn it over to James and let him tell us what the youth council's been doing for the past two weeks? A little bit about himself. Oh, and he does go to Pine Forest High School.
Yeah, like she said, I am James Thomas. I am the vice chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. I attend Pine Forest High School. And the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council has done numerous things within the past few weeks and the past couple of months. We've had our Glow Fest, which had over 200 runners. We had people all over the city just come out and have a good time. We also had our, we partnered with the Got Your Bag Program where we packed over a thousand bookbags and had a festival at Festival Park with music and dancing, and it was a great event. We gave away all the bookbags, well, not all the bookbags, we gave bookbags to everybody, and we still had bookbags left over, and we were able to donate those. And recently, we had just got done with our Military Appreciation, and with that, we had a hygiene drive where we packed bags with a bunch of toiletries, like toothpads, toothbrushes, and stuff like that. And we gave them to a veteran shelter, and we also held our own Military Appreciation luncheon where we had some veterans come in, and we had an event, we had like a poem, a song, and we had a keynote speaker at that time. And that's a few things we've had going on within the youth council.
And Mayor, if I may, Rebecca is out in the audience. If you can wave your hand.
Why don't we get Ms. Mitchell to come up to the microphone? Ms. Mitchell, we don't have many students watching us usually in the evenings, but we do have a lot of teachers and advisors and that type of thing. Tell us something about youth council and how people can get involved.
So, in the youth council, if you are a 10th, 11th, or 12th grader in Cumberland County, you can join the youth council. It is easy to get to join, you just need a recommendation from your principal. It's like a family, you know, we are all very connected. We do many things in the community, like James has said, so it's a great experience for youth to come out. The year is basically an open entry, so you can come out throughout the year to join.
Well, thank you, and thanks for your leadership. You are the president this year.
Yes, sir.
Very nice to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And she is also the president on the state level, or the state youth council.
As well as she speaks, she may be president of the United States one day soon, so thank you, Ms. Mitchell, for all you do. Counsel at this time, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. I'll go to you for action.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moan.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with a slight modification. Move item 9.02 from Administrative Reports up under Other Items of Business, renumber it 8.02, and then take the current 8.02 and make that 8.03.
Okay. Is that just for formal discussion from the, uh, from the staff? Is that why you want to do that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, this one, the option we have is to take no action, recommendation at this time on item 9.02, so it's more appropriate that it would be under Other Items of Business versus under Administrative Reports.
Okay. If that's the desire. Okay, thank you, Mr. Crisp, as a second. Madam Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, it was to take no action on the renaming, but to install the private street signs as requested by the church.
Okay, very good. Seeing no further discussion, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Counsel, item 6.0 is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.05, which I would call for an explanation of that particular item before we vote on it.
Seconded, Mr. Mayor. Seconded by Councilmember Arp. All right, that's a motion by Mr. Crisp, seconded by Mr. Arp for approval of the consent agenda, less item 6.05, which we'll have further discussion on. Seeing no further discussion, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 6.05, Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would ask the city manager or someone from staff to briefly explain what 6.05 is about and for our viewing audience and for those present in the chambers. I think it's commendable what we're doing here, but I think the citizens ought to know what we're doing in 6.05.
Yes, sir, Ms. Crisp. Mr. Mayor, counsel, good to see you this evening. Just a little clarification on that. We had a project scheduled for Rose Hill Road to put sidewalks from Country Club down to Ramsey Street on the southern end of Rose Hill Road on the west side. It was scheduled to go under construction for this year. Unfortunately, we ran into a problem on the design phase, and we had to back out. When we got to the Lafayette Cemetery, the right-of-way was too tight to fit a sidewalk in that area, so we had to back out and do another design to bring it to the other side of the road. Unfortunately, that would delay our project to next year, so instead of tying up those funds for this, for the whole year, we're looking at moving four projects forward to go ahead and get that money used, put that sidewalk on the ground. And also, we had some remaining funds in some other projects that we had just finished, so we put that together to bring that forward. If you look at your CCAM, what we had is that we're moving up the design on the 71st School Road project, and also the construction for the sidewalk on Sycamore Dairy Road, on NC 24 on Grove Street, and also Morganton Road. So, we can get those pushed to this year, and then look at Rose Hill Road, getting that design finished, so we can get it constructed next year.
And so, Mr. Stone, what is the approximate cost of all of these sidewalk constructions in this particular item here?
The ones that we're looking at accelerating is about $360,000. The Rose Hill Road by itself is a little over $520,000.
So, we're talking over $800,000 that we're programming to build sidewalks in the city?
Correct.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Mr. Crisp, that's a motion to approve that item.
Mr. Mayor, I do move to approve item 6.05, having had it explained for our audience.
Seconded. Seconded by, uh, Mr. Wright. Counsel, seeing no further discussion, I'll ask for your vote. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Would like to recognize a couple of folks in the audience. Former council member Robert Massey is with us. Bob, welcome back. This place look familiar to you? And, Mr. Massey, how many years did you serve on the city council?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years. Thank you, sir, for your service. Also, Mr. DJ Here. Mr. Here, where are you? Oh, there you are. A former and future council member. Welcome, sir. How long did you serve when you were on?
Sixteen, sir.
Sixteen years. Very good, sir. Welcome back. Lot of wisdom. Lot of wisdom in this room. Current council exception. Just kidding. Just, just kidding. Just kidding. Item 7.0 is a public hearing. Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers for this item?
Dilly-dilly, we'll open and close the public hearing. And move to item 7.01, which is the paratransit policy amendment. Mr. Hume.
Yes, sir. This is the item for the public hearing. Mayor and counsel, we're, the policies that you adopted in March of 2016, we recently had a triennial review by Federal Transit, and they found some discrepancies or some deficiencies in our definitions. So, this is going to basically change three definitions, all in the favor, I think, of the riders, as well as we are wanting to change our subscription policy where we'll actually allow more subscription rides. And so, that's the purpose of the changes.
What does that mean, sir?
The, the subscription?
Yes, sir.
Subscription is a, it's a, uh, you ride the same day, the same time, all the time, so you don't have to call in all the time. So, it's more convenient. It helps us schedule, and it's also more convenient for the, for the customer.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hume. No speakers at the public hearing, or public hearing. Counsel, I'll go to you for action.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve is presented by staff.
That's Mr. Arp, seconded by Mr. McDougal. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I apologize. One of the things I did intend to do, I wanted to introduce our new Assistant Director of Transportation, and that is Tiffany Neal. She has actually an extensive experience in paratransit, so Tiffany's back here, and I just wanted to introduce you to the council.
Welcome to family, Ms. Neal. And other items of business, 8.01 is a rezoning of property from SF 10, single family, to limited commercial located at 7376 Stony Point Road. We'll go to Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular item came to you back in August. It was, at first, a motion was made to deny this item. It tied at five to five. A second motion to allow a three-month time period for staff to work with the property owner and neighbors to try to work out some type of compromise was then made and passed. With the help of council members Jensen and Crisp, staff met with the owner, the owner's representatives, along with the neighbor and some adjoining property owners, and have, I believe, reached a kind of tentative, uh, resolution of bringing this back as a conditional rezoning. And I believe Councilman Crisp may have more information on that or may have a motion he wants to make. Unless y'all have any questions of me, I'm not going to go through the presentation again for this one.
I don't see any lights, Mr. Harmon. Thank you very much. Mr. Crisp, we'll go to you.
Mr. Mayor, I did, in fact, Ms. Jensen and I and others met with counsel, Mr. Jonathan Charleston, and I want to commend Mr. Charleston on working with us to find a solution to a very touchy situation. I have asked Ms. Newton to ensure that all members of council, as well as the new persons coming on, get a copy of those conditions so that we can familiarize ourselves with all of the things that we worked out with Mr. Charleston representing his, his client, the owner of the property. And so, if the motion is in order, I would move to deny the requested rezoning and to waive the one-year waiting period, to allow the applicant to immediately apply for a conditional rezoning, and that conditional rezoning to be returned to this council in January of 2018. That is my motion.
Seconded by Mr. Hurst. Discussion, Mr. Coleman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Crisp, would you, would you accept a friendly amendment to say we'll refer this back to zoning versus deny it? Because isn't it different criteria with a denial?
We have to deny. The, the request was for a straight rezoning. We have to deny that rezoning request in order to entertain a, a conditional rezoning request coming back to us at a later date.
So, that's be denied.
And that will, that conditional rezoning request coming back to us, as I stipulated in the motion in January, will require a public hearing in which both parties will be allowed to speak. Now, that is why I asked for the information to go out to everybody so that we can save time when it comes back in January, but we have to do it this way. Mr. Mayor, let.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Moan.
Question, I believe, for Mr. Harmon. With the holiday coming up, is there appropriate time to have this come back by the last council meeting in January to go through all the reapplication, all the staffing?
Well, again, since we've already gone through the process of putting down on paper Mr. Charleston and his group, the conditions that they're willing to do, it really, the new application should just be a variation of the original. We can bring this to zoning commission, the first part of, the first, their meeting in January, and then this would follow right after at the end of January.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coleman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with that being said, Mr. Crisp, would you allow a friendly amendment to say that that the fees will not have to be paid again as a part of your motion, just to make sure that she's not having to pay?
Yeah, I would, I would more than, yes, I, Mr. Mayor, elect, I would be happy to acquiesce to that friendly amendment, that no fees be required from the property owner.
Thanks, sir.
All right, that's the motion by Mr. Crisp and Mr. Hurst. Counsel, I see no further discussion. I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 8.02 is the renaming of Meeting Street to Marion C. George Street.
This is an item that was in front of you at the end of September in a public hearing. At that hearing, you heard the information about the historical significance of Meeting Street. Staff was asked to...
Staff was asked to work at looking at a name. A compromise was done, and the actual application has been withdrawn by a letter from the church. So in acknowledging that letter, we put it on in front of you, as well as the indication that you heard from the attorney, that private street name would be put in place honoring that individual. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I see no lights. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Devier.
For motion, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the withdrawal of the street renaming request and allow the installation of two private street signs.
That's Mr. Devier, seconded by Mayor-elect Colvin. See no further questions or lights, counsel. I'll ask for your vote on the motion. Madam Clerk, that's also unanimous. And at this time, we'll move to 8.03, which is recognition of service for some of our council members. Let me start and ask Councilmember Devier to come down to the, come down to the podium, please.
It is refreshing, I'm just going to keep, I don't know if that'll work. Just going to try to keep this microphone in the middle of us. It's refreshing when people take, thank you, such an interest in this community, as Mr. Devier did years ago. He's been working hard for the city of Fayetteville for decades. And it is an honor to have worked with him personally over the past two years, and would like to present you, sir, with the key to the city, and thank you so much for your continued community service.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, you can go ahead. Thank you. Let him sit down, so hopefully he doesn't make too much noise. Do I have a couple of seconds to take a couple, a couple of words? And I'm going to variate, because Jenny will get on to me, I'm going to actually make sure I cover what I want to cover. And I'll be brief, because I know I'm not the main attraction. There's some people that've served a lot longer than I have up here, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hurst. I just first want to thank the citizens of Fayetteville District Two for allowing me the opportunity to serve for the last two years. I'm eternally grateful for the opportunity to serve. It's a unique honor. Councilman Arp talked about it earlier, raising your right hand, that's a unique honor. And so I'm honored to have served. To my wife and my almost one-year-old boy, thank you for allowing me to serve and doing what you needed to do with our family, to allow me to serve and being that teammate, because you served just as much as I did, and allowing me to do what I needed to do to serve the citizens of Fayetteville. Doug, thanks to an incredible city staff. It's truly a group of professionals that make our city a better place. I wanted to name a few people, hopefully I don't, don't anybody get insulted, but, you know, Karen, Jay, Kristoff, you guys just truly go the extra mile, and we're fortunate, this city's fortunate to have the three of you serving in this capacity. Tracy, Cheryl, Kelly, I appreciate you guys always finding the numbers for the hard questions that usually came from Ted and I. So I appreciate that. Victor, I don't think Victor's here, but thanks for fighting for the, for the better neighborhoods and for leveling the playing field in parts of our community. Chief Major's not here, but he's a consummate professional. Chief Hawkins, you hit the ground running. Where are you? You've hit the ground running, and I know this city's going to be a safer place with you at the helm, so I look forward to that. Doug, you're building an incredible team, my friend. I've known you a long time. And there's no doubt in my mind that one of the best decisions this council made was making you its manager. So good luck to you. You've definitely got the helm now, so continue to build your team and do great things for this city. Also, just want to thank the many community leaders that I've served with in the neighborhood watches. They are the integral part. They're the ones that make it happen every day, the people in this community do, and just want to thank them for their time. There's a numerous amount of people down at the neighborhood watch levels and just the communities that are making it happen every day, and I'm very appreciative to them. I want to thank the current council. Little guys, I hit the ground two years ago. I came on a team that was already been together and working together for two years. And you let the new guy spread his wings a little bit and be part of a lot of change over the last two years. And it's truly amazing to think about what we did in two years. And I say "we," I mean, from baseball to downtown to hurricane recovery to all kinds of things. We might not have always agreed on the path to get there, but what I knew is that we all cared about this city, and we all cared about the greater good. To the incoming council and Mayor-elect, I wish you much success. I have no doubt that each of you will keep your, your promise to put the people first in all your decisions, and I hope those decisions made by you leads to greater prosperity and less inequalities in our city. I ask that you stand committed to reducing the poverty in our city and changing the economic outcome of so many children in our city. I've been honored to serve. It's been a privilege, and I'll cherish the time I was able to serve this city as elected as official. God bless each of you, and God bless our city of Fayetteville.
Counselor Member McDougal and I came on, this last time I came on, we came on together. And I consider you family. It's, it's one of these things that I guess we argue like family, but at the end of the day, like Mr. Devier said, it's about getting the job done, and we've, we've always come together to do that. Committed to your community as a whole, committed to the city, and just appreciate your four years of service, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, if we had some stewards here to take the collection, I might wood preach, but it's good to see all of you. It's good to have had the opportunity to serve such a great city and such a great people and population within this city. I consider it an honor to have done what we've been able to do. I consider it an honor that you've elected me two terms to serve you. I, you know, it's, it's really wonderful. Now, on the night that I failed to win, I lost, my wife jumped up and down and started shouting, said, "I got my husband back." So it's, but it really was an honor and a pleasure to, to serve you. And so many wonderful people we've had the opportunity to work with, just lovely people throughout all this city. And I want to reassure all of you, all of this city of ours, that you're in good, capable hands with the new council. So wonderful people. Even my opponent, who worked very hard, I, God bless him, and I know that he'll do a wonderful job. He did a wonderful job before for you and all of these. And I, you know, all of us argued and fought at some point, either in private or public. Me and the mayor were brothers. We did more than anybody, but at the end of the day, we were always on the same team. God bless you. Thank you very much.
Now, let me read what these plaques say. I should have done that the whole time, but it says, "We proudly present our city key and coin to the council member's name who's retiring, in grateful recognition of your many years of dedication and diligence to the city of Fayetteville." And then it's got "years served" on here. If everybody will see the key, that's actually the city key that's on here. When Mr. Hurst came on council, that was actually the key to the city.
Yep. And back then, I had hair and it was blonde.
You know, like Mr. Hair and Mr. Massey and so many others. It's been an honor to work with you through the years and to sit up here on this dais with you on multiple occasions. Bobby, thank you so much for your years of service.
Thank you, Nat.
How many years?
Friendship, friendship. Eleven years and three months.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
And since my former colleagues, I don't need them, were Robert Massey and DJ Hair, the mayor said I could take the rest of this evening and give my remarks, so the 28 pages are up there, so I'm going to go up there.
Good evening to everyone, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the unique opportunity to begin my public service by being appointed to the Fayetteville City Council as an at-large member in the year 2000. My first meeting was with City Manager Roger Stansfield, who handed me the budget book and said, "You know, Bobby, government moves real slow." I mean, compared to you being in a family business where you make decisions on a daily basis, you've got to move forward with them. And he, so, he said, "Bobby, you have any questions?" I really didn't know much about what was going to take place, or I hadn't had a chance to read the budget. So he said, "Well, be ready for Monday night's council meeting." The day after, the city fax machine was installed in my home, and it was a thermal roll paper. Remember that, Nat? We didn't have computers or cell phones to text or whatever, so. And the agenda packets back then were hand-delivered, either at your house or your, or your business, by the Fayetteville Fire Department. So that's how times have changed. Now, so I really do feel old tonight. After my election, and I was single back then, you know, and, you know, so. Now I'm married with a kid, Kirk. So after my election in 2007, the City Council had moved government at a very fast pace, passing positive initiatives, and we have not slowed down since. It's been my pleasure to work beside each of you, and I love you, and I'll miss you. And to those that have served before me, like Robert Massey and DJ Hair and many others. But it was the love of this city that we all had, and want to create a place where people want to live here, and more importantly, a place where our children and grandchildren will want to raise their families. The greatest lesson that I take from my years of service is the renewed realization that self-government can and does work when men and women of honor and integrity focus purposely on the public good. I want to take this moment to thank the residents of District Five, who have elected me to five terms. It is now time to focus on my family. I will remain involved with Fayetteville Beautiful and Operation Ceasefire and wherever God leads. To the new council, and we've got two new members present here this evening, I challenge you to be visionaries and look at the big picture on what policies and best practices will make Fayetteville appealing as home for families, a wonderful destination for travelers, and a suburb location for new business and industry. You are empowered and responsible to make this happen. This council has been blessed with an award-winning staff, as Councilmember Devier had mentioned. To all the employees of the city of Fayetteville, I say thank you. And I want you to know that it has been my distinct honor to work alongside you over these many years. And in closing, I want to thank our city manager, Doug Hewitt, and city attorney Karen McDonald for your advice and counsel in helping me and my fellow colleagues work through the many issues that came before us. And also, special thanks to our city clerk, Pam McGill, who is the pulse at City Hall. My service now comes to an end, and I'll always be so thankful for having been given the opportunity to serve this city. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and may God bless you and this great city that I love.
And let me start by saying, the story that I told earlier about Bobby and the key is not factual, okay? Because I was on the council before Bobby got here, so.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you and the council for giving me an opportunity to roast you tonight. Mayor Robinson. In all seriousness, Mayor Robinson served as an at-large council member from 1989 to 1995. He was a District Five representative from 1999 to 2001, and he served as the mayor of this city from December 2013 to December 2017. So you've been around a long time, my friend. And in spite of a very interesting election cycle, I've served beside you for the last four years, and I've enjoyed most of the time. We have, just as some of the other council members, we have had our differences publicly and privately, but for the most part, we all knew that our intentions were the same, and that was what's in the best interest of this city. So I appreciate you, and tonight, I want to present to you the key to the city for your service, and continue to do great things for the city. Thank you, my friend.
I don't know what's left to say, other than thank you. Thank you, Doug, and Karen, and the city staff for buttoning up with the hard questions and the tantrums over the past four years. It has been an honor the past couple of years to have a mayor pro Tim like Mitch Colvin. He gets it. He understands business. He understands what it's going to take to move forward. So the city is in good hands with this new council. Ditto what was said earlier. I've often described myself as the luckiest mayor in the southeast, and that stands true. Fayetteville is truly a unique place, and it's unique because of our people. And I have been very fortunate and honored to be able to serve this community again these past four years. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if you would indulge me with a, with a few comments.
I don't know what you're going to say.
I don't either. I don't either. You know, we've kind of had a tradition where we've, we've roasted people when they've left, and this was fertile ground this year. I don't either. I don't either. You know, we've kinda had a tradition where we've, we've roasted people when they've left, and, um, this was fertile ground this year, uh, with some of the folks we have here. Um, you know, the, the mayor, what is it, Mr. Mayor? You're getting something on your phone there. If you could take care of that. Um, the, the mayor has really done a nice job of herding cats with this group, even while he's trying to keep his Twitter account active. And, uh, and we certainly appreciate the fact that he can multitask. That's pretty cool. And, uh, Mr. Hurst, I was amazed tonight that he could actually go to the podium and address the crowd and not have a beauty queen with a tiara.[1197.44][1197.44][laughter] Just astounding. I mean, in all the years he's been on council, I don't think that's ever occurred. And, and, uh, Mr. Devier was very, very, uh, you know, contained in not trying to orchestrate the camera angles tonight. And, uh, you know, because of his vast marketing experience. And, and it was very refreshing to see, uh, the mayor recognize Mr. McDougal after he had his hand up. It, it only took four years.[1224.44][1224.44][applause] But by God, we can learn, can't we? I mean, you know, and, uh, but I just wanna, I just wanna say, you know, on behalf of the council and personally, what a wonderful group of people to work with. I mean, genuinely, good people who love the city, who really care about our citizens and care about what we're going. And, uh, you know, it's been a real pleasure to come and work with each of you. And, uh, and, and I wanna concur with what the mayor-elect said. You know, there's been differing opinions, differing strategies and thoughts, and, and that's good. That's healthy. That's what makes organizations better, uh, not to have group think, but to, to come in and weigh out each decision with real diligence and care. And, uh, and I think this group has been very adept at that. So, with that said, we're really gonna miss the leadership and the character and the quality of the people that are departing tonight. Mr. Kirk Devier, Mr. Chalmers McDougal, uh, Mr. Bobby Hurst, and Mayor Nat Robertson. So, on behalf of the council, just wanna say thank you very much from, from the bottom of our hearts for all that you've done for
Thank you, Mr. Arp. Ms. Jensen.
Of course, I wanted to put my two cent in that, um, I've, uh, the past two years I've served on this council, being the only woman on council, and I have been treated very well, and I wanted to thank everybody. But the four of you, um, everybody knows how I'm gonna feel. I'm gonna miss all of you. I wanna thank you for your service. I wanna thank you for making sure I get to walk out to the car, not by myself. And you are all four true gentlemen. Um, thank you for all the time that you've put in, away from your families, away from your jobs, and everything, and always being able for me to pick up the phone and listen to me and tell me. I called Chalmers one time, and he was like, "You calling me?" I was like, "Yeah, I wanna know what you think." But I do appreciate that, and I appreciate everything that you've done. I wish you success, and I wish you, and Lexi's probably gonna be the only one that gets this, but I wish you agapi, which means I wish you love and happiness.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Mr. Crisp.
There's not a single person up here, council member, mayor, mayor-elect, that I haven't fought with more than once, including Mr. Hair and Mr. Massey. I will continue to fight with you and for you in the interest of this city. That has always been my focus. Mr. Mayor, it's been a pleasure. And Mr. Hurst, am I really the dean now?
You're the dean.
All right. Mr. Devier, it's been a pleasure to sit beside you and have you tell me to turn my light off, my mic off, 'cause people, 'cause people could hear me mumbling under my voice. Reverend, I'll see you in church. Bobby, I'll see you on cleanup. It's been a pleasure. We've made a lot of inroads and strides in this city. We've been very cohesive. Mayor-elect, you were my protege. Now, I guess I'm yours. But I'm still going to be supportive of the leadership. I'm a military man, and when you change leadership, your allegiance changes. That's how it's done. That's how progress continues. And so, I enjoin every member that's returning to this council and new members to get behind the mayor-elect. Let's support him, and let's move this city forward. We have a lot of major projects in the, in the bucket. We're gonna make 'em work. Mr. Devier, stay with prosperity, please. Just because you're not a council member doesn't mean we don't need your voice, your wisdom. Mr. Mayor, I know you've been a politician since you were a young man in college, so it's in your blood, so we expect to hear from you from time to time with suggestions. The best suggestions from this, for this council comes from you, the citizenry, and we appreciate that. We can't run this city without you, George Breeze. We need your input, all of you. But I'm pledging to you tonight that I'm gonna fight with these council members until we get it right. And we're gonna move Fayetteville forward because Fayetteville is first. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp.[1523.72][1523.72][applause] Mr. Wright.
I just wanna say to the mayor, um, and the council members, um, that are departing from the bench but not departing from service, that, uh, I have truly enjoyed serving with you guys, uh, and it's not over. Um, we have made great strides in the last four years. It took me about eighteen months to two years to get, get my feet on the ground, uh, when, when it comes to the total concept of municipal service and local government service. But we have made such great strides, and we've made history in, in these four years that I've served. And, uh, I just wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, and, and those council members, Kirk Devier, um, Pastor McDougal, and Bobby, you know, we were way back from ceasefire, um, serving in the community. So, I, I just wanna say that, you know, I have mixed feelings when it comes to change, but change is always good. Uh, and I wanted to say to, um, Mayor-elect that, uh, I believe in you. I believe in your leadership, and I think that the transition, uh, as they have said, that the city is still in good hands with the council coming on. I'm excited about the next two years, um, to serve you. And as, as, um, Bill said, we're gonna continue to fight the good fight, uh, to have a balance for all the people and to continue to be the voice for all the people in the city. Uh, I've kinda grown real fond of Kirk. We have, um, worked hand-in-hand on several, um, issues in the city, and I, I, he's not going nowhere. I'm not gonna let him go anywhere as far as, uh, uh, pathways to prosperity is concerned. Uh, he was the, you know, the motivation factor. He brought this thing to life. Um, he called me aboard as a co-sponsor to it, but he will still be there because that's where his heart is, in the community. And we're gonna continue to glean from, from Kirk. And so, thank you so much, uh, my friend, uh, Pastor McDougal. Man, I, I tell you what, you're definitely gonna be missed on the council, but we'll definitely continue to talk with you and, and pull from your, your, your genius. You're a very smart, intelligent man, and, uh, you're a man of God. So, we appreciate you as well. Uh, Bobby, go play with your ten-year-old kid, man. Enjoy life, and God bless you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor Wright.[1691.44][1691.44][applause] Mr. Moan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the oratory skills, uh, as some others on council, but we're losing four good friends, you know, here on, on the team. Uh, we've drafted four new team members, you know, the citizens spoke. Uh, I would like to thank Chet, Bobby, Nat, Kirk. You know, it's been a good two years, four years for some of us. And, uh, I, I thank you for your friendship, becoming part of the family, working hard for what's best for all of the Fayetteville. You know, we don't do ward politics. We've never done district politics, and you guys, uh, have, have proven that, and I, I know we're gonna continue so. Since I'm probably the last speaker between us and the door, I will kinda end it for here, but I, I do wanna say thank you, you know, for all your mentorship, your advice, your guidance, your input, and I thought we're a pretty good team. Thank you.[1757.36][1757.36][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Moan. I don't see any other lights, so I will proclaim this meeting adjourned.